Apologies to those in the gallery and those viewing online. We've had some technical glitz this evening. We will continue throughout this evening if we have further glitz because the meeting is actually being recorded. Yep.
Through you, Mayor. The previous question from councillor Demetriadis I took on notice in the break. I have found the relevant section of the Local Government Act and we've quickly checked the report. So the relevant section is the second quarterly report of a financial year must include a statement by the CEO as to whether a revised budget is or may be required. We've checked the report and that statement is not in there. So councillor Demetriadis is correct. And through you, Mayor, I request that this report be withdrawn and we'll bring it back to the April meeting.
Thank you. So that report has now been withdrawn. So we'll go over to our which is the contract award supply of the bulk bins. Councillors, do I have questions to our offices in reference to 9.8? For those who are watching, we did a procedural motion where we did a change of order for tonight's business. So we're now currently up to 9.8 and then we've got 9.9 and then we'll go back to the original listings. So councillors, do we have any questions to our offices? If not, then I'll ask for a mover for this item. Do I have a mover for this item? Councillor Rennie.
Thank you, Mayor Messina. Sorry, Mayor Williams apologised. I move the officer recommendation and insert the words awards contract CT202283 for the supply and haulage of bulk bins to Citywide Service Solutions, PTYLD for the total upper contract.
Do I have a second? Okay, councillor Newton, thank you. Over to you councillor Rennie.
Thank you. This is a contract award for something we probably don't often think much about because when we think about waste, we're thinking about our residential bins that are picked up from the street. But of course, council has a waste and resource recovery centre where there is a significant volume of waste that moves through that place and much of it that lands in very large bulk bins that need to be picked up. This is pretty big business, as you'll see, because the contract award is for in excess of $5 million over a seven-year period. It's really important that this waste is managed well, that it lands in the right place, that we minimise materials going to landfill. And I'd like to thank all of the staff who've been involved in assessing the tenders that were received and making sure that probity was carried through correctly and that we have very best value for money for council's resources in ensuring that we get a terrific service and good value for money. So I thank all of the staff who are involved in that because I know that it's actually quite a complex process assessing these tenders.
Thank you councillor Rennie. Councillor Newton, as a second, would you like to speak on the item?
No, nothing further.
Are there any objections to this item? Who'd like to speak? Okay, I'll put that item to vote. All those in favour? That is carried unanimously, thank you. I'll go over to 9.9, which is stormwater drainage maintenance. Councillors, do I have any questions to our offices before we go to the debate? If not, then I will ask councillors who would like to move the item. Councillor Hannan, do I have a second? Councillor Rennie, over to you councillor Hannan, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move the officer's motion and if we put up with the relevant names. It's quite a long one actually because there's a number of categories. I, maybe hard for people to read that, but the, I'll take those names as given. So maintenance of drainage assets is essential for Darriban, particularly in the context of climate change. In the last year, we've seen serious flooding around Melbourne. We know that severe weather incidents have become increasingly frequent and severe and extreme. Well-functioning drainage keeps our streets and waterways clean to protect amenity and biodiversity. And there are over 680 kilometres of stormwater drains in Darriban. The contracts here will appoint a panel of companies to maintain assets for five years with options to extend it for a further two years. It's a substantial amount of capital investment and very important. I'd like to thank the staff for their work on a thorough evaluation and procurement process, including an endorsement of the probity process, as you can see in the papers. And I'd like to commend the successful tenders. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Hannan. As a second, would you like to speak on the item?
Look, just ever so briefly to say, one of the things I love about these reports coming to council is that you learn new things. So who knew that we had closed-circuit television as part of our drainage system? And I think this is a really fascinating dimension of what we have to do to maintain really healthy drainage systems is to have this kind of technology and to embrace the way this technology makes it easier for us to maintain systems and get the water flowing in the direction that it wants or should flow. And so for anyone who didn't know that closed-circuit television is part of a healthy drainage system, now you know and I hope you're as fascinated by that as I am, I thank all the staff involved in the process.
Thank you councillor Rennie. If there are no objections, I will put that item to vote. All those in favour? That is carried unanimously, thank you councillors. I'll go back to our agenda items. So we have 9.3, which is the parking permit policy. Councillors, do we have any questions to our offices, please? Councillor Demetriadis.
No question, but I'd like to move the motion.
Okay, any other?
I have an alternate motion to.
No problem councillor Demetriadis. Councillors, do we have any questions to our offices at this point in time? Okay, councillor Demetriadis.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got an alternate motion in regards to this item.
Okay, has that been circulated?
Ah, yes.
Okay, do we have a second for that item also? We do councillor Greco. Just kindly put it up on the screen and just confirm that that is your item.
Yes, I believe that's correct.
Thank you councillor Demetriadis. Over to you councillor Demetriadis, you have a couple of minutes to speak on the item.
Thank you. I'm raising this alternate motion for a number of reasons. Firstly, the community consultation that occurred on the parking permit policy earlier this year showed that option two, which was to expand access to permits to include people living in developments of up to two dwellings on a lot, and I quote, 'received the most community support and less opposition than all other options'. Furthermore, the report states that residents identified that this option two was a fairer way to allocate permits. Yet what we have before us is a recommendation that goes completely against community consultation results. Therefore, the amendment I am raising tonight firstly attempts to rectify this situation such that eligible dwellings for a parking permit should include those dwellings built between the 20th of December 2004 and adoption of this new policy in 2023 as part of a new development or subdivision resulting in two dwellings on the original lot. In addition, I've also incorporated an amendment from councillor Greco that reads 'circumstances where an extenuating permit should be granted include dwellings that are eligible for a resident permit and have two or more cars registered to an address and the number of cars registered at their address exceeds the number of off-street parking spaces'. And finally, point three of this alternate motion has incorporated councillor Messina's amendment, which unfortunately she's not here to speak to about. But it states that circumstances where an extenuating permit should be granted includes where a resident is required to store a commercial vehicle at the residential property. So therefore, in conclusion, I believe that this alternate motion will make the parking permit policy a lot fairer and more inclusive of the community as well as ensures transparency for everyone involved. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Demetriadis. I noticed you stipulated there was a point three. Just want a good clarification on that, please.
Point D was councillor Messina's, but yeah, yeah, sorry.
Thank you for the clarification. Councillor Greco, would you like to speak on the item? Okay.
Councillor Williams, can I just ask, when was this circulated? Because I can't, I can't read that. So what time was this circulated by councillor Demetriadis?
You can, I know you're heavily pregnant, so you can sit and you can answer that question.
It was circulated by one of the senior officers for the area and she confirmed that she's added all the three amendments from myself, councillor Greco and councillor Messina together, and that was today.
What time?
Sure, I'll just find it. 1:48?
Sorry, what, what time was that? And you have to speak through me, please councillor.
1:48pm.
1:48 today?
Yeah, is the email.
The email that went to all councillors?
Correct.
Can't see D in that email.
If councillor Newton scrolls down.
Hang on, it's okay, I'll take it from here, thank you councillor Demetriadis. To our officers, just going to get clarification in reference to D and when that was added.
Thank you, through you, Mayor. These amendments were circulated to all councillors on Thursday. So one email outlining one, A, B and C, and a separate email outlining D from councillor Messina. So today we put them all into the one amendment.
Through you, Mayor. When was the email with the consolidated amendment sent to all councillors, please Vanessa?
I do apologise, I didn't include the attachment, I just confirmed that I had put them together from last week.
Can that kindly be circulated to all councillors now? So, excuse me councillor Lawrence, we'll just deal with this moment, this item first. Can we just have all councillors to have that circulated at this point in time so they've got it on their screen? To our officers.
Through you, Mayor. Are you able to send that from governance, please, to all councillors and to the exec?
Thank you, I believe that's now been done. Councillor Lawrence, did you have a question also?
For the sake of meeting, I'll withdraw the point of order and direct it some other direction.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Greco, you're second to this item. Would you like to speak on this item, but you reserved your rights? Was there any other speakers? Either for or against? Councillor Rennie?
Thank you, Mayor Williams. I'd actually like to move an amendment. The amendment is very simple, it would be to point, so I'm just I, and it would read dwellings that are eligible for residential permit and have three or more cars registered to an address and the number of cars registered at that address exceeds the number of off-street parks. So it would be to replace two with three.
Do our officers have that amendment? And do you have a second for that item? Oh, I don't need a second. Oh, sorry. Can I ask the mover, councillor Demetriadis and the second, if you accept that? When was the amendment circulated?
I circulated this concept on Thursday and asked for feedback and an explanation of why three was more appropriate than two.
That was a question, it wasn't an amendment.
Okay, the question is, do you accept it or not at this point in time? Thank you.
No, because it hasn't actually been circulated, I haven't seen the amendment either.
Okay, councillor Greco, do you accept the amendment? Okay, no problem. Do you have a second for that item, please councillor Rennie? Councillor Newton? Councillor Rennie?
Thank you. I'm proposing this amendment because I actually don't believe two makes any sense. And I explained this in an email that I sent to all councillors on Thursday. The logic is as follows. If someone has off-street parking, they are currently eligible for one residential parking permit. They can therefore park two cars, one off-street and one on the street. So they are able to park two and therefore they won't need an extenuating permit because they can already park two. If someone has no off-street parking, they're eligible already for two parking permits, so they can also park two vehicles. So there is no circumstance in which someone with two cars would be eligible for an extenuating permit because anyone with two cars has the capacity to use one off-street car park and one on-street car park or two on-street car parks. And that's why I'm suggesting that three or more is actually the point at which an extenuating permit might be triggered or might actually be useful because someone who has three cars registered to their address may actually find themselves unable to park one of the cars. They would park one off-street, one on-street and then may have difficulty with a third car. However, if they have two off-street car parks, my understanding is they wouldn't be eligible for the extenuating permit because they would have two off-street and one on-street. I hope I've made that clear, why I think three makes sense and two makes no sense because there is no situation I can think of in which someone with two registered vehicles at their house cannot get a permit for their car as required.
Thank you councillor Rennie. Councillor Newton, would you like to speak on the item?
No, nothing further.
Councillor Lawrence?
Thank you, Mayor Williams. Yes, look, I'd be speaking against this amendment simply because of the unprofessional manner it's been brought into the chamber. And I would encourage councillor Rennie to submit it after the draft is advertised and submit it in due course so that we consider it when we adopt the formal policy. But I can't make a decision on the run.
Thank you councillor Lawrence. Any other councillors would like to speak on the amendment? If there were no further speakers, I will be putting the amendment to vote. All those in favour? Councillor Hannan, councillor Rennie, councillor Newton, councillor McCarthy, all those against the amendment? Councillor Demetriadis, councillor Lawrence, councillor Greco and councillor Williams? That is a draw. I'll use my casting vote and vote it down, thank you. So that amendment has not been carried. I'll go back to the substantive motion, which the mover was councillor Demetriadis and councillor Greco. Do we have any further speakers on this item? Councillor Hannan?
I'd like to move a simple amendment.
Councillor Hannan, what is your amendment and has it been circulated?
It's just to remove point D. I can circulate that now if needed, but I think it's self-explanatory.
Okay councillor Demetriadis, do you accept councillor Hannan's?
No.
Councillor Greco?
No.
Do you have a second for your amendment councillor Hannan? Councillor Newton? Councillor Hannan, over to you, please.
Thank you, Mayor. So just to be clear, this is to remove the point in relation to extenuating circumstances for commercial vehicles. And while I support the intention to support local businesses, this, the proposal there has just been noted at point D would create a number of problems, perhaps unintended consequences in our community. Firstly, having a commercial vehicle is not really an extenuating circumstance, is it? There's actually no specific definition of commercial vehicles that applies in this specific context of, in this area of law. So it would require additional resourcing, that's someone, staff members, systems in place on an ongoing basis to make decisions and probably to assess any disputes that come up into whether someone has, whether someone is required to have a commercial vehicle, whether that vehicle is a commercial vehicle. It's not a simple matter. Secondly, there's no saying that the owner of the commercial vehicle actually works in Darriban. So they could park their car in Darriban but work, you know, anywhere in Melbourne probably. So basically, if we go ahead with this proposal, it's providing an exemption and handing over the use of public land, which ratepayers all own, at a much discounted rate for potentially little or no benefit to Darriban ratepayers. And finally, this exemption would undoubtedly increase parking pressures in already busy streets. Already busy because the fact that permits are being reduced necessarily means it's a busy area. We're increasing demand in already busy areas, which is going to lead to more parking pressures. And there's also equity issues. So we're creating a new class of people who get an additional permit because they have a particular type of occupation, whereas the person next door with a different occupation or perhaps not at work doesn't get an extra permit. So we're creating winners and losers unnecessarily. For these reasons, I believe that section and those proposed extenuating circumstances should be removed. Thank you.
Thank you. As a second, would you like to speak on the item?
No, nothing further.
Any other councillors who'd like to speak on the item or else I'll put it to vote for or against? I'm going to put the amendment up for vote. All those in favour? Councillor Hannan, councillor Rennie, councillor Newton, councillor McCarthy, all against? Councillor Demetriadis, councillor Lawrence, councillor Greco, councillor Williams? We go back to the substantive motion. I'm going to put this item to oh, apologies, I'm going to have to use my casting vote. I also vote it down. The reason being is that this is a draft policy. I would like to see this go to community consultation and get their feedback and that's the reason why I'm using my casting vote on this particular item. I would like to have now, I think we've had a couple of amendments now.
Oh, sorry.
I'd like to, we go back to the substantive motion and if the item can be put to vote, I'd like to speak against the item. Sure. Councillor Newton?
Thank you, Mayor Williams. Parking is a big challenge in our city, I don't think any
Can't hear you, if you can kindly just bend it.
I think you've got a
You've got a bad moe, naps.
Can you kindly use councillor Rennie's mic then, please?
We'll bring your mic councillor Newton.
Apologies, we'll have to start the clock again for councillor Newton, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Williams. So I'm speaking against this alternative motion on the draft parking permit policy. So we've received community feedback on this. I think it's worth reminding councillors that we are in a climate emergency. I think it's also worth reminding councillors that the Darriban transport strategy talks about how our aim is to double the share of walking, cycling and public transport for all trips by 2027, which is a very short time away. So this might seem innocuous, but what it actually does is really, really change the way that we frame parking in the city. So since 2004, we have said that it is a developer's responsibility to provide parking on-site that is necessary for people's needs. So that has been the case for almost 20 years. So what this does, this alternative motion does, by recommending that if there's been a subdivision with two dwellings, this really changes the 2004 rule. It will give more permits to people and it will mean that this is very difficult to roll back because if you go forward with this and there's more gridlock, there's more parking, people can't park on their own streets because too many permits have been given away. It's very hard to roll this back because we've taken the owners of developers to provide car parking on-site and we're using more public land for this purpose. So I am fully against this particular alternative motion. I think what we were doing was working well and I support the officer's recommendation, which is basically if after 2004 houses are knocked down, it's rebuilt, it's fine that they get the same amount of permits, that makes total sense. Of course, carers permits, I think we all support that. But I'm not willing to do something that will encourage car use, that will encourage gridlock, that will encourage traffic in our streets. It will make it harder for cyclists, harder for pedestrians. And I think we will see the impact of this for years to come and I'm not willing to do this in a climate emergency.
Are there any speakers on the alternative motion councillor Lawrence?
Yes, Mayor Williams, thank you. Look, I'm delighted to support this amalgamated amendments that have been brought by councillors to give some real options to residents to look at their parking policy. In particular, to see if family homes that are dual-ox, that are on small blocks that sometimes are bigger than a Northcote terrace, but still small blocks that have been excluded from the permit system are brought back and given some consideration. And let's see what the residents say about that. Let's not make villains out of tradies and families in this city. Let's be honest. All across High Street and Plenty Road, for 20 years, council has been handing out 30% discounts on car parking because in fact, the car parking requirements of places like High Street, Northcote and Preston and Thornbury and Sydney Road in Coburg and Brunswick have never been honoured. Discounts in Moreland, or Marybeck as it is now, have routinely been 50%. We are going to be swamped by multi-stories on our streets with no car parking, which in fact, Greens End Dorce councillors in Marybeck say should be zero car parking and it's all up to whether or not the market can provide it. The perfect collision of over-development and neoliberalism. This motion here is putting a range of options for regular people who live in our city. Actually, there's very few dual-oxs unfortunately. Most things are either divided in four, six, or they get six stories put on them. So let's not make villains out of these people and let's, the community decide whether there should be some extra fairness so that people can vaguely park near their homes.
Thank you councillor Lawrence. If there are no further speakers, I'll make this the last one. Thank you councillor Rennie.
Thank you. I'm also rising to speak against this motion. For every extra person who might get a permit, there's someone else who will find it harder to park. And I think it's important that we not forget that. The people who benefit most from permits are those people who often have mobility issues, who might be parents with a number of kids under five trying to get out of their house, get kids, you know, safely out of their car and into their house. Those are often the people who have asked for parking permits in their street because it facilitates their ability to go about their daily life. When we start giving out more parking permits, we're going to make it harder for those people. We're going to make it harder for the elderly person who has 10 kilos of shopping that they're trying to get in their front door. We're going to make it harder for the parent with three small kids to get their kids We're going to make it harder for the parent with three small kids to get their kids safely into their house, because the parking that they currently use is going to increasingly be used by the neighbour next door with their trade vehicle, or the share house down the road where there's multiple cars. And often, those are the people with capacity to walk a bit further.
Sorry, Mayor.
Councillor Dimitriatus? No, councillor Dimitriatus? What's your point of order?
10.1 G, it's clearly misleading. Currently, families are not entitled to receive parking permits that are sufficient, which is, and many other people, including, you know...
Councillor Dimitriatus, you can talk to me, please.
Yes, currently, so the argument, the line that councillor Rennie is stating is actually completely false and misleading. Currently, a lot of families and people who live in single...
Councillor Dimitriatus doesn't get to debate this, you have to...
I have to say why it's misleading. And there, currently, we don't have carers' permits or anyone to help the elderly, so she's just making an argument.
Councillor Dimitriatus, I do not accept your point of order. I'll ask councillor Rennie to please continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Williams. As I was saying, for every person who comes out of tonight a winner, because this council grants extra parking permits, someone loses. And as I was saying before, the person, the people most likely to lose are the families with a child with a disability who rely on being able to park close to their house. They are the family with small kids who need to get three, I don't know if anyone's done it, I had three kids under three, I know what it's like to try and get them out of a car and into a house safely. You want to be able to park close to your property. Those are the people who are likely to find it harder when we give out permits to people who don't currently have eligibility. This motion tonight, if it passes, undoes 20 years of parking wisdom, ignores an officer recommendation, and flies in the face of the direction that every other council in Australia is going in.
Your time's up. Thank you. I'm going to put that item to vote. No, no, no.
I deferred my right to speak, and I...
I did mention that I was going to have councillor Rennie as my last speaker this evening. Time is running away from us this evening.
I was the second of Mayor Rennie and Mayor Williams, and I politely deferred my right to speak, to allow others to speak, and I thought I would get an opportunity to speak. I'm the second of the motion, I should be entitled to make a short statement.
And I would like a right of reply.
Otherwise, I would have, you know, put my hand up before councillor Rennie, I just politely allowed councillor Rennie to be a speaker.
I'll allow you to speak, councillor Greco, and I'll give you the right of reply, but I assure you, we are wasting time this evening going around, and I would like to have this item put to vote as soon as possible. Councillor Greco, I understand that you're, an issue regarding standing up, so you can be seated while you speak this evening. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor Williams. I've got a crook foot, so I have to speak from sitting down. Look, firstly, I'd like to say parking is a highly contentious issue in our city, we all know that, and we don't, and it's an issue that residents in our city are very attached to, because it's something that immediately affects where they live. So we have to get this right, and we have to understand that. Second point that I'd like to make is I'd like to pick up on the issue of extenuating circumstances. The world has changed since 2004. Families have become bigger, but there is a housing crisis, where as a result, children are not leaving their home and therefore staying on, and to their late twenties, even early thirties, have cars and need to get about. And so therefore, there is a case where extenuating circumstances could be applied to allow one extra permit in situations where there are a lot of adults in the same household. And also, what we're seeing because of the housing crisis, is that we've seen shared homes, shared housing, where we have more and more people sharing a house, and many of them requiring a car at all hours of the day in order to get to work, given the casualisation of employment in our society at the moment. The other point that I would make is that let's put this out to the community, and in order to get some feedback from the community. Let's test these ideas with the community, because I think that the community needs to give us some direction. And the final point that I'd make, picking up on what councillor Rennie is saying, it's an irony, folks, councillors, that we're having this meeting here in Reservoir, and where in Reservoir, there isn't any decent public transport, and all those factors combined, and where people need their cars. I understand the issue of climate emergency...
Your time's up, thanks, councillor Greco.
But from an issue of equity, people in Reservoir...
Your time's up, thank you.
Need their cars.
Thank you. Before I go over to councillor Dimitriatus, I would like to make a statement again to all councillors here this evening, that I know this is a very heated agenda item, but I'd like you to be respectful and ensuring that we need to go about our debates in a very professional way. It's important to maintain a civil tone, and especially raising your voices. I'll hand it over to you, councillor Dimitriatus. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So just in summary, I wanted to go through a few points. Firstly, electric vehicles are coming, they're here. We're going to expect...
Can you address it to me, please?
Sorry?
Can you address while you're talking to me, please?
Why do I have to address you when I'm talking to you?
It's just the way it is.
Since when? In which rule?
Always.
And so, electric vehicles are coming to, they're here, which means, which means that our community are still going to need a parking space. And this, the current policy doesn't actually look into that particular aspect. Instead, we're talking about the climate emergency and all these other aspects, but we're not listening to the community, because they're telling us from the community, from the results, that they need parking. So we need to come up with better ways, other than restricting them, of actually giving them the opportunity to have parking so they can live, as councillor Greco said, an equitable life without disadvantages.
Councillor Dimitriatus, look, I understand that you're very passionate about this, and it's a very powerful motivator for you, but can you please be mindful and be respectful in reference to your temperament and tone?
So, yes, the owners should be on developers to provide parking at all times, and that this particular motion actually says that up until going forward, developers should have, should be providing appropriate parking. But then, don't, councillors shouldn't be voting for inappropriate developments that give parking exemptions when it comes to planning. There's other avenues that we can take to alleviate some of these issues. And when we talk about, you know, families, that's one of the biggest concerns in the area, where families are not having access to parking permits so they can travel to and from places where they need to take their children. So I don't, so I think this particular amendment addresses all those aspects. It actually is a lot fairer for the community, and it's what's been raised by the community. We need to start listening to them, rather than dictating how they should be living their lives.
Thank you, councillor Dimitriatus. I'm going to put that item to vote. All those in favour of the alternative motion? Sorry, what? So I'm putting the motion to vote, or the alternative motion that's up on the screen. All those in favour? I've got councillor Dimitriatus, councillor Lawrence, councillor Greco, and councillor Williams. All those against? Councillor Hannan, councillor Rennie, councillor Newton, and I guess councillor McCarthy is sustaining?
I'm sustaining, Mayor.
Thank you. I'm going to have to use my casting vote. I'm going to actually vote in favour of this item. The reason being is that I understand it's a draft policy. I'd like to see how it unpacks going through the community consultation process. Thank you very much. Councillors, I'm going over to the next item this evening. The next item I have is the Parking Management Operating Procedures, 9.4.
I'm happy to move this motion.
Councillor Greco? Alternative motion? Before we do so, councillor Greco, I need to ask if there's any councillors that would like to ask any questions to our officers. If there are none, thank you. Councillor Greco, has your alternative motion been circulated to all councillors?
Yes, it has, Mayor Williams.
Thank you. Do we have a second for the alternative motion? Councillor Lawrence? Councillor Greco, can you just confirm that your item is up on the screen, and that is your alternative motion?
Yes, Mayor Williams.
Thank you. And if you'd like to speak to the item, go ahead. Thank you, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Williams. Right at the outset, I'd like to thank our officers for the engagement that they've had in helping to prepare both the report and also the alternative motion. I'll say that upfront, because I know I'll be running out of time and then I won't be able to thank them. Look, what this motion does, it's a longer-waited motion in terms of how we manage our parking restrictions in our streets. Again, this is a highly contentious issue in the city of Darabban, as it's been demonstrated in the past, where basically the town hall was full of people because the council was trying to apply blanket parking restrictions across our city. What this does is actually puts out, as a draft to the community, a proposal where sets out the process that we would need to go through in order to apply parking restrictions on our streets, and actually making that explicit so that the community can actually see what the process is. What it also does, as part of my amendment, the changes which is involved up on the screen, it actually, not involved, but part of the motion, the amendment there, what it does is that it actually allows the community to have a say on what takes place on their street when parking restrictions are being considered. At the moment, the policy that we have, or the practice that we have, the community is not involved in a direct sense. Yes, they are consulted, but the decision is ultimately made by our officers after consulting with the community. What my motion does is that not only do we consult with the community, but we actually survey the community, and we have some tests there about that the community needs to be, come back with the survey in a positive way in order for the changes actually to be put in place. This is very similar to what the city of Marybeck does. They have also a requirement that 60% of the community of the street that is surveyed need to come back and say that the restrictions should be put in place, and the council will then follow on and place those restrictions into that area. I think that's critical, because I think we need to bring the community with us, and I believe that the community, whether particularly it affects their street, need to have a say in the process. And what I've tried to put there and put in forward is to create that balance by allowing the community to have that say. Also, what I've done in the amendment or the change to the officer recommendation, that where there is a safety issue or an access issue, of course, our officers have discretion in applying parking restrictions. That's the first threshold question that needs to be dealt with. From that question onwards, then we need to engage the community in the form of a survey to have a say over...
Your time's up.
Restrictions of the street. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Lawrence, as a second, would you like to speak on the item?
Yes, Mayor Williams, through you. I'd just like to support the amended, detailed amended motion that councillor Greco's put together in consultation with our staff, and in respect to taking notice of our twin city, I suppose, the city of Marybeck, which has equal development pressures. You know, I'd like to go back to the old rules. We used to just have a vote, and when the congestion got too bad, we actually got permits. And that was the pattern that happened in Fitzroy and Collingwood, and it happened in Northcote and Thornbury, and slowly, as the pressure comes up, people vote for permits. We made a misstep in 2019. We wanted administrative and taxation efficiency, and tried to grab and regulate a whole lot of spaces that aren't even congested, and that caused a massive backlash. And that actually put back parking controls for three years, well, four years nearly, here. So we actually got a chance to come back and get a regime that strikes the right balance between promoting mode shift in those areas close to transport, trains and trams, and also ensuring that residents are in control of how the regulation of parking spaces go, and we don't act in a dictatorial manner, and say that's our property, and we'll decide how much we sell it for, and if you have to pay $3,700 for a temporary permit, we'll make the decisions on the restrictions. We need to at least embrace this level of democracy. It's not as much as we used to have, and I know things have changed. We can't just go back to democracy, but we can at least give people a reasonable amount of say, and this detailed work and the clauses in clause E will actually...
Thank you, councillor Lawrence, your time's up.
Thank you.
Do we have any other speakers on the item? Councillor Rennie?
Mayor Williams, I have an amendment.
Sure. What's your amendment?
Just a clarification I've circulated to all. It is something that I had raised with councillor Greco before, and it defines who we're talking about when we talk about 60%. So it would be to add into the sentence, you'll find this in your emails, under E.2, where it says at least 60% of responses received, we would add the words "from people eligible for parking permits are in support of the proposal."
Is that acceptable to the mover and second?
No.
Just give you a moment.
I've highlighted that in the email I've just sent to people.
I've said no?
Only one has to say no, and it has to be debated.
Okay. And do you have a second for that? Councillor Newton? Would you like to speak on the amendment item? Councillor Rennie?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I think it's important that we define who's actually able to vote in these situations, because I want you to imagine that a 10-storey building is built at the end of your street, and in that building there are 50 residences, and there might be 30 houses in your street. It's not in the interests of the people in that building at the end of the street to see parking restrictions introduced, because they may want to continue parking in your street and guaranteeing that no one in the street can get a car parked, because of the lack of definition of who would be surveyed. And in the 60% that councillor Greco has proposed, those people in that apartment building will win the vote on every occasion, and the existing residents in the street will never get to implement parking restrictions. To give people a real example, a few months ago, this council voted unanimously to support the planning permit for development of 50 townhouses in Basting Street. Those townhouses had off-street parking, but in fact, the residents of that development may determine that they'd rather park in the street. If they park in the street and nobody can get a car parked, the solution available to council and to residents in that street is to introduce parking restrictions. Under the proposal by councillor Greco, the residents of those 50 new townhouses will get to vote against parking restrictions, because they want to fill up their car parks with table tennis tables and storage, and continue parking in the street. And the residents of Basting Street will never get to introduce parking restrictions, because they will be voted down every time by the 50 new, residents of the 50 new townhouses, who are protecting their own self-interest. I think this is a really sensible amendment to actually get around this issue and to make sure that we're clear who it is we're going to listen to in the vote. I hope that makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Newton, as a second for the amendment, would you like to speak on the item?
Yes, just briefly, I think that this makes sense, because there really is more and more of a barrier to be able to get the responses that you need. So I know certainly when I fly it to get the word out about council elections, more and more there are big apartment blocks where you cannot get into the mailboxes. So if you're wanting to get a response from enough people, you will not be able to if you can't contact those huge blocks. And if there's a big block of apartments, might have 100 apartments, then, you know, you're not going to get to the amount that you need to, to make this change. So I think councillor Rennie's amendment to say "from people eligible for parking permits" makes sense, because this is the people that will be affected.
Thank you, councillor Newton. Are there any other speakers to the amendment item? If there are no further speakers, I'd like to put the item to vote. All those in favour of the amendment? All those in favour of the amendment item? I've got councillor Hannon, councillor Rennie, councillor Newton, councillor McCarthy. All those against? I've got councillor Dimitriatus, councillor Lawrence and councillor Greco abstain. And um, I also have the casting vote and I'd like to abstain also. Therefore, that item has not. Or maybe can't on the casting vote? There's always a first. Therefore, the, the amendment has been failed. So we'll go back to the substantive alternative motion. You've had the mover speak councillor Greco and the seconder councillor Lawrence. Do we have any other speakers on the alternative motion?
Mayor, I have a question, a clarification for officers just in regards to this particular item. Um, I know I'm not allowed to ask a question, but I think it's important that because we, I don't, uh, we, we don't want to allow, I just want to make sure that the policy doesn't allow um, apartments to actually um, put in.
I believe we've passed that point. Um, I apologize, but that's just the way the cookie crumbles. Councillor Dimitriatus?
So then I have an amendment I'd like to, um, I'm happy to circulate it.
Do we have any other movers or seconders at this point in time? Sorry, any other speakers on the, on the alternative motion? Councillor Hannon?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm, I'm speaking against the motion. Um, I don't want to go back to the old days where it was street by street and having votes. Street by street and having votes leads to conflict within streets. It leads to people going around trying to uh, ask or even pressure each other into getting signatures on a page. And I don't believe that's good for harmony in streets. I believe it's council's roles to take, it's council's role to take on these issues. We've just heard from a, a submitter this evening requesting, pleading to council to say please bring in restrictions into this, into my street. There's, there's parking issues that need to be addressed. Why are we set, why would we set a limit that you need a quarter of the street, including the issues which have just been discussed? Some people who is may, who may not be interested in addressing these issues. Why would we set a quota of any minimum number if there's a serious issue that needs to be addressed? Um, there, there are some serious issues with this um, proposal which would make it unworkable. Um, firstly, how do we define who the impacted people are? It's of course the people who live on the street, work on the street. How about people who visit the busy area because of the shopping um, or business nearby? Or public transport or park or school? They also have an interest. They use this hypothetical area every day, yet they're not included in these votes. Um, we know that a 25% is a pretty high threshold again for any consultation. You could ask people who would like a free ice cream and put a letter in everybody's letterbox and not get 25% outcome. And then we pick a, we pick an arbitrary 60% um, threshold again for a decision to be made. Um, this, as councillor Rennie has pointed out, may lead to some very skewed outcomes, which council would have no ability to change. We would just have to implement. And lastly, it's not clear why things need to be installed in four to six weeks. It's unnecessarily restrictive and may not be possible. There's a lot of things
Your time's up now councillor Hannon. So I've had councillor Greco speak, councillor Lawrence speak, councillor Hannon speak on the alternative motion. I've got councillor Newton next, kindly if you'd like to speak on the item.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so I'm speaking against the substantive motion as well. Um, so we know that this won't work because it says very clearly in the report, so based on previous experience, a requirement of 50% of a street to participate in engagement and to agree to a change is unworkable. Average participation rates in parking consultation ranges from 10 to 20%. Yet what this, what this alternate motion does is it says that basically nothing can happen unless you have 25% of owners and residents of the affected area and street need to apply to council to request an investigation. So in the example I used before, you know, if you have 10 houses on a street and you have an apartment block at the end with a hundred apartments in it that you can't access, how on earth would you get to that 25%? There might be 200, 250 people living in those apartments and there might be 10 houses. So how on earth would you get to 25%? So what this means is that basically anyone in our community who has a need for parking restrictions in their street will not be able to meet that requirement. So for that reason, I am absolutely against this alternate motion because it will make it basically completely unworkable for any changes to be made. And there are people that have been waiting for over a year to have parking restrictions put into their street. So this makes absolutely no sense.
Thank you very much councillor Newton. Do we have any other councillors? Councillor Dimitriatus?
Thank you, Mayor. I have an amendment that I just want to put in and it's in regards to E.
Um, yes, just hang on a moment, I need to ask a question. Has your amendment been circulated?
I'm just about to do it, but I, um, it's just some quick points to say that uh, I'm
You stop the cock, please.
So it's just excluding medium and high-density dwellings in the, into E. I've just sent it to everyone. So two E.
Because councillor Lawrence doesn't have his laptop.
So two E I, just after responds in brackets.
Apologies, your iPhone, yep. Technology. Uh, I need to ask the mover and a seconder councillor Greco and councillor Lawrence, do you accept councillor Dimitriatus's amendment?
I'm happy to accept that because it defines the buildings.
Councillor Greco, do you accept?
Can I understand where the amendment is, what, what the words are? Oh, okay, excluded. Yeah, not a problem, done.
I just sent it to just sent it here.
I found it, not a problem.
You found it? Okay, it just needs to be circulated to all our officers also?
Yeah, I have sent it.
Thank you. So I, councillor Lawrence is a second to the alternative motion, has accepted your amendment councillor Dimitriatus. And councillor Greco, have you accepted councillor Dimitriatus's?
Not a problem.
Yes, okay, so your amendment has been accepted. Therefore, that would be, that would be added to the alternative motion.
Three, three, Mayor, can I just check with officers that that's able to be implemented? And that they clearly understand that what that means is an instruction? Just, just, sorry, I just need to make sure we have a motion we can implement if it passes.
Is it medium density, what the definition?
We just need to see as officers where the words are being inserted, please, so that we can make sure we can implement it. Thank you, Mayor.
Sure, thank you. I'll just give our officers a moment.
Three, Mayor, can I just get Ms Petrie to explain how she'd interpret that so councillors understand it?
Sorry, that's not the entirety of it. It's also um, E two, to also have the same word.
It's two or more? Medium being two or more or three or more? Thank you, Alan.
Through you, Mayor, thank you. Um, the definition of medium density is a development of two or more dwellings.
Thank you. Thanks, Mayor, I needed to get that clarity from officers.
Um, I'll be withdrawing my acceptance of that. And sort of Dimitriatus have to define it better to be consistent with other policy.
Can we just change it to three or more dwellings? Or four?
Look, Mayor, look, I will not accept the amendment. I think it's been done on the run and I will just leave, leave it as it is. And it's going out to consultation and we can address it in a much more timely, better considered manner when it comes back to us in a month's time.
Because the mover and seconder have received further clarification in reference to what medium destiny, medium high-density means, which is two or more, I believe now the mover and seconder has decided to refuse and not accept your amendment as they would like it to go to community consultation. Councillor?
Three, Mayor, I need to clarify, this is not going to consultation, the previous item was.
Oh, apologies, I'm sorry.
For you councillors, thank you.
I apologize on my behalf. Uh, councillor Rennie has second councillor Dimitriatus's amendment.
I have a further amendment to just include high-density dwellings instead of, and removing the word medium.
What's the definition of high-density?
We're now getting to a point where we're just playing with a couple of words here and there. I've got a feeling that we may need to have to adjourn this item to get this clarification correct as we're just wasting time otherwise. Is that a possibility? At least it gives people a break for five minutes for a toilet run if they need to. So I will break for five minutes and we'll come back in, um, let's say, well, actually I'll give it up until 20 past eight. Thank you. Amendment? And it goes back to the alternative motion at this point in time. Councillor McCarthy?
Um, Mayor, I'd like to move procedural item, a procedural motion number 12, which is um, to lay the motion on the table to the next meeting.
Procedural motion, item number 12, to lay this item on the table. Um, can our officers give clarification what that means, particularly for those who are viewing online? Jacinta?
Yep, through you, Mayor. It means that this agenda item, the substantive motion that is before us, which is councillor Greco who moved it, seconded by councillor Lawrence, will be considered at the next council meeting.
So it means it gets put on hold as is right at this point in time and we pick it up at the next council meeting just to allow us to get some breathing space and clarification. That is a procedural motion.
Through you, Mayor, just to clarify, requires a mover and a second and is not to be debated.
I can second.
Of councillor Newton as a second, councillor McCarthy as the mover and councillor Newton as a second. Because it's a procedural motion, I have to put that to vote. All those in favour? I've got councillor Hannon, councillor Rennie, councillor Newton, councillor McCarthy and myself councillor Williams. All those against? Councillor Dimitriatus, councillor Lawrence and councillor Greco. That motion has been accepted and it will go forward to the next council meeting. Thank you very much. We'll go over to the next item, which is the electronic
Point of order, did we get a vote on that?
Councillor, sorry, uh, I'll go over to our governance. I have to go back to vote, but I thought it was a procedural motion.
You, Mayor, councillor Lawrence needs to quote what, what point of order his point is based on in terms of the governor's rules.
Uh, just to have an understanding how the vote went.
He just called a vote, it was the carried.
Okay, the vote was carried. So it was councillor Hannon, councillor Rennie, councillor Newton, councillor McCarthy and councillor Williams, myself. All those against was councillor Dimitriatus, councillor Lawrence and councillor Greco. Any further clarification? Thank you. We'll go over to the next item because we are running out of time. Next item is 9.5, which is the review of the electronic gaming machine policy. Councillors, do I have any questions to our officers, please? In reference to this item? If there are no questions to this item, do I have a mover on this item? Councillor Rennie and councillor Greco as a second. Over to you councillor Rennie, thank you.
Mayor Williams, just to be clear, I'm not moving the officer recommendation. I'm moving an alternate which has a couple of amendments which have been discussed by all councillors beforehand. So it might be good to get that up on screen.
Yes, thank you. And once it's up on the screen, can you clarify if that's your amendment, your alternative motion, sorry?
Yes, that's correct.
Great, thank you. Councillor Rennie, you can speak on the item if you wish.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm delighted that this policy has come back to council. It's, I think, one of our outstanding policy success stories. Four years ago, this council moved a bold gambling policy which sought to demonstrate leadership and reduce the harm, the very significant harms that occurred to the Darabben community as a result of electronic gaming machines. I'd like to thank the staff of council who have been involved in a massive effort over the last four years to implement that ambitious policy. It required a real change in mindset for clubs and community groups who were encouraged through that policy to move away from their reliance on poker machines for subsidy, for support and for venues to hold events at. Our staff have done an exceptional job working with clubs. And over the last four years, I think our policy, it would be fair to say, has uh, come to be well-understood by clubs and well-accepted by members of the community who support council's efforts to reduce gambling harm. As we move forward, we want to be even clearer that we're not just going to encourage people to move away from an unhealthy reliance on gambling venues and gambling subsidies and support. We're going to take a stronger stand, but we're going to do that in partnership with clubs and organisations. We're going to support them with transition plans. And I hope that we'll continue in this way to demonstrate to our community that we understand the profound impacts that poker machines are having in our community. Uh, we heard from a community member today who came to commend us in fact on the stand that we've taken. And this is work that is more important now than ever. So just today on the news, there's been talking about the significant harms being created, particularly for young people in our community as a result of the proliferation of gambling advertising. What we know in Darabben is that poker machines cause more harm than any other form of gambling. And the losses from poker machines are actually increasing. So they do look set now that there hasn't been any venue closures. They look set to be the highest that we've seen in over a decade. That's really terrifying because that's $90 million that isn't being spent in small businesses, that's not being spent by families buying their kids school lunches and shoes to go to school and whatever else it is they need. Uh, these are predatory venues that uh, create unhalted harm. So I'm really proud to be part of a council that shows leadership. I'm confident we will be a council that is unanimous in this regard. And other councils all over Victoria and in fact Australia will continue to look to us for the leadership that we're showing here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. The second, I'd like to speak on the item.
Thanks, Mayor. Look, I've got to thank Mayor Rennie and I fully endorse what she has said. I'll just focus in on that this is an important policy. It's, it's a milestone. Uh, it moves from, uh, into a compliance setting. And so therefore we are going to, what this policy essentially does councillors is that it does the maximum that a council can do within its powers to try and wean off um, both the council and clubs and associations from gaming. We don't control the whole agenda in relation to gaming, particularly in relation to pokies. Um, but I, I believe that this policy is a, an important incremental step. But I believe that this policy is an important incremental step and brings us right to the frontier of what a council can do in regards to the corrosive and cancerous nature of pokies in our city. Particularly, I must say, if you look at the stats, particularly in the northern part of our cities and particularly in the most disadvantaged northern parts of our city. So I commend the policy and I'm hoping that tonight that we will get a unanimous vote in Malaysia to this so that we could show clear leadership in regards to this important issue, which is really upsetting a lot of people's lives. And I believe that the strategy that we're embarking on was a similar strategy, if you like, that was embarked on in regards to the anti-smoking. There's a lot of similarities there. So let's endorse this. Let's endorse this unanimously and that sends out a powerful message. The final thing I say, there are guarantees there in the policy, thanks to councillor Dimitri Artis, of supporting clubs, particularly smaller clubs, ethnic clubs, in order to help them transition away from being lured in by gaming venues. Thank you.
Thank you. We have the mover who has spoken for and the second councillor Greco. Are there any speakers against the item? As I would like to put this item to vote as we will be running out of time. So I'm going to put this item to be put to vote. All those in favour? That is carried unanimously. I do want to just make a quick statement and say a big thank you to councillor Dimitri Artis and councillor Rennie and councillor Greco in having those discussions beforehand and working together, ensuring that this policy goes through with having that robust conversation prior. So thank you. I'm going to move on to the next item, which is the Northkirk Public Golf Course nine point six.
Yes, Mayor Williams, I'd like to declare a conflict of interest, general conflict of interest in relation to residential amenity of my family.
Thank you councillor Lawrence. So you have a conflict. You can kindly leave the chamber and when you get a chance, just fill out the form. Thank you. Councillors, do we have any questions to our officers before we go to the debate? If there are no further questions, do I have a mover on the item? Councillor McCarthy.
Mayor, I'd like to move the item, but with an additional point seven, which has been circulated to councillors and officers.
Okay, was that circulated earlier today or?
It was circulated this evening and hopefully it should appear on screen.
Is that your amendment? Councillor McCarthy.
I'm just reading it as it gets bigger, Mayor. Yes, that looks correct, Mayor.
We have an alternative motion there. Do we have a second for that?
Mayor Williams, I just have a question in relation to the alternative motion, particularly in regards to the additional point. I've only seen that tonight, so I just want to ask some questions in relation to it.
I will allow it because the amendment has only come through very late this evening. So I will allow the question. Yes, thank you. Go ahead councillor Greco.
Thank you, Mayor Williams. Look, it's only come through now, just after seven o'clock, which I don't think is good practice. But putting that aside, I just want to understand through you, Mayor, to our officers, have we had any discussion with the Warangiri and all those other groups that are mentioned there in regards to the, in regards to beginning this process of the naming of the open space? Usually why I say that, because usually before we do that, we conduct consultation and not spring this up in a council meeting before talking informally with the Warangiri out of respect. I'd like to know what discussions have occurred with the Warangiri, specifically in relation to this point number.
Thank you councillor Greco. I would like to hand that over to one of our officers if they're able to answer that.
Through you, Mayor.
Thank you.
To this point, we haven't had any direct conversations with the Warangiri. This parcel was included in the, I checked the minutes, it was included in the November twenty twenty-two report to council. It was considered by council at the time. But we, to answer the question directly, we haven't had any direct discussions with the Warangiri recently about this parcel.
Mayor, if I may, just to add to my colleague's response, I might also just reflect that we've been going through a process to review the road and place saving policy, which would guide decision making on any of these naming opportunities.
Are there any further questions in reference to this item?
So therefore, because the question has been answered in the way that it has, again, I would like to move a procedural motion that the, to lay the motion to a later date. And point number twelve, as we previously did with the parking motion, so that then we can get some feedback from our officers and some informal sense from the Warangiri and other stakeholders. And then we can consider this at a later date. I move that procedural motion.
But I don't even have a second for the alternative motion. Do I need that first and then procedure? Apologies, sorry, I didn't see. So I've got, I have councillor McCarthy, who was the alternative motion. Councillor Rennie seconded the alternative motion. Councillor Greco has now put in a procedural motion. And do I have a second for the procedural motion? Councillor Dimitri Artis. Because it's a procedural motion, I have to go straight to the procedural motion and go that to vote. Is that correct?
That is correct.
That is correct. Procedural motion for this to be held to go to the next council meeting. All those in favour to go to the next council meeting? Councillor Dimitri Artis, councillor Greco and councillor Williams, myself. All against? I have councillor Hanlon, councillor Rennie, councillor Newton and councillor McCarthy. So that procedural motion has been lost, councillor Greco. I will go back to councillor McCarthy. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mayor. And just to give some explanation, point seven is a rewrite of a point that appears in the next item, which is the Mary Mary Way, which item, which already referred to council initiating consultation in relation to locals and other interested stakeholders in relation to the particular parcel of land. So I've included it here because this item is more broadly of actually about Northkirk Golf Course. What I would also note though, is that in council's own road, place and road naming policy, which came through council in November last year, so relatively recently, only a few meetings ago, that policy actually identifies opportunities and priorities and identified naming opportunities for various spaces. One of those spaces that it's been identified for the twenty-three, twenty-four period, which is coming up, is of course this particular parcel of land. And the identification in that list is actually to identify Warangiri, Warang names and to undertake the appropriate consultation in that regard. So what this really does is bring together what's already in our road naming policy, which has already been identified and published in a council minutes and actually ties that in with moving that process forward. And obviously, there's a process that council has to undergo and this makes sure that we do that in a timely way. Mayor, I'm pleased to see the return of a motion which I actually didn't support at the last meeting because I think the way it presented gave the impression that what we would hear from Sport and Rec Victoria would be two hundred thousand dollars to be spent on a golf architect, when you and I, Mayor, both know that there are serious safety concerns that have been expressed to us as councillors and requests for council to take action to both address those concerns, but also improve the amenity and opportunity for people moving through the new park space at both the northern and southern ends of the Northkirk Golf Course. So what I'm pleased by is actually that the advice from Sports and Recreation Victoria, the state government, is actually a split of the proposed funds, which sees allocations go to both park design, to some safety improvements, of course also towards some concept plans in relation to both golf and non-golf uses. And of course also some general components. I note the request from one of our residents this evening in relation to allocating some of that funding towards biodiversity. It's not council's money at the moment. I would absolutely back that proposal if it was up to me, but that's not what's on the cards. We would need probably the advocacy of our local member and the agreement of Sports and Recreation Victoria to see that money allocated towards biodiversity. I would welcome that, but at this stage, that's not what's on the table. What is on the table is, I think, a fairly reasonable allocation of two hundred thousand dollars.
Ten seconds left.
Welcome that at this point in time and move ahead with the project as it is.
Excellent, perfect timing. Councillor Rennie as a second, would you like to speak?
Oh, thanks.
No problem. Any other councillors would like to speak for or against? Councillor Dimitri Artis.
I have an amendment that I circulated earlier.
Okay. Was that earlier this evening councillor Dimitri Artis?
It was last week.
Oh, last week, yep, no problem. Can we get that up on the screen, please, to our officers? Okay. Is that correct? That's your amendment there?
Yes.
Excellent, thank you. First, I need to ask our mover and second if they accept.
Mayor, for the sake of accuracy, will we now make that number eight? Because that's an amendment to the motion that's on the table, which has a seven already.
Sure.
Sorry, through you, Mayor. I was just going to clarify councillor Dimitri Artis, are you deleting the seven in the original motion or adding to this as an eight?
I'm happy to add it in as an eight.
Thank you.
The mover and second, do you accept councillor Dimitri Artis's amendment on that item?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Councillor Dimitri Artis, because that wasn't accepted by a mover and second, do I have a second for your amendment? Thank you councillor Greco. Councillor Dimitri Artis, over to you.
So I wanted to thank officers for coming back to us and finally recommending that we accept the two hundred thousand state government grant to redesign the Northkirk Golf Course with shared use facilities. However, I still have numerous concerns about this recommendation. Firstly, I'm disappointed that council has negotiated to only spend thirty thousand of this grant for the design of a golf course master plan by a golf architect, when we all know master plans cost a lot more than that and only invest ten thousand dollars of this grant to improve the club rooms. I'd like to remind everyone that last year, council made this decision to create shared use facilities at the Northkirk Golf Course precinct for everyone, for enjoyment by all community members. Yet here we are spending only forty thousand dollars of this grant on community sport and a hundred and sixty thousand dollars on designs for a pathway and park. While these figures, as bad as they appear in my opinion in terms of equality and shared use, are much better than what was initially proposed to us, they still do not represent a fair and equitable shared use project for golfers and park users. Furthermore, I raised this amendment to ensure that the works at the Northkirk Golf Course precinct are suspended until council is fully informed of the contents of these reports. This is to ensure we receive an overall picture of the precinct rather than waste more resources, time and ratepayers' money on trying to implement something that has no basis. Once these reports are brought back to council in the November meeting, according to this amendment, council will then be in a stronger position to seek state government investment for the precinct.
Thank you councillor Dimitri Artis. Councillor Greco.
I'm speaking as a second of the amendment that councillor Artis has put forward. Look, I support the idea of the amendment because I think what it essentially does, that it asks for all the reports to come to council and then as a result of that, then council can get a holistic picture, as councillor Dimitri Artis had mentioned. And then we can work out how we need to step forward and what funds we need to allocate in order to achieve and what the reports say. Why I'm supporting it, because a lot of those reports overlap with each other. And I think that it just doesn't make good project management sense where we get different reports at different stages and that we commence spending on the different reports when we don't get a holistic picture of the situation. So I support the amendment and I plead with councillors also to allow that this amendment to be included. So like that we can move forward in a informed and better manner to properly manage this important project. Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no further speakers on this item, I'll put...
Sorry, I'd like to speak against the amendment, if I may, Mayor.
Okay, sure.
And I hope to actually convince the mover and second to reconsider their positions because I think there are unintended consequences from what is proposed. The amendment, and I will be voting against the amendment, but the amendment, if it was successful, would have effectively mean that consultation would be suspended in relation to these proposals. And I don't think that's actually what the mover intends, but I think it would be an unintended consequence as a result. One of the potential key stakeholders in relation to the funding that has been proposed by SRV is of course the golfing community. And they would be, I think, critical stakeholders in the development of any alternative proposal for how golf can be undertaken at this site. I think it would be a frustrating thing for them to not be able to be consulted in relation to what is effectively a proposal to look at how golf could operate in their site in a safer way. Of course, there's also the state government themselves, who have put forward through SRV this funding split. Would like to see this go ahead. And I don't think that suspending any such activity until November is actually what they want to see here. So I think it would be a frustrating thing for them. I think it would also be frustrating for our local MP, to be honest, to advocate it and announce this funding. So I would urge the mover and second to reconsider their positions. Let's not support this amendment and let's get on with supporting the substantive motion. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you councillor McCarthy. Are there any further speakers on the amendment? There's no right of reply on amendment. I will have to put that item now to vote. All those in favour? Councillor Dimitri Artis, councillor Greco and councillor Williams, myself. All those against the amendment? Councillor Hanlon, councillor Rennie, councillor Newton, councillor McCarthy. That amendment has been lost. We'll go back to the original alternative motion, which was the mover's councillor McCarthy and councillor Rennie, who have been the mover and second. Do we have any further speakers on that item?
Mayor Williams, I just want to say a few, make a few points in relation to the substantive motion. I just want to express some concerns. If you look at the substantive motion points, one, A, B, C and D, they are all design and due diligence work that needs to be done. But only a few of those reports, those design reports will be coming back to council for consideration and for some sort of assessment and some sort of direction in terms of whether we've got this right or not. So I was hoping that we could, you know, get all the reports to come back to council. But this motion doesn't explicitly say that. The only report that will be coming back to council is in relation to the, I believe in relation to the master plan, if I'm correct. But the other reports will not be coming back to council. And again, I'd like to express my concern at the last minute where an amendment has been put, I believe in a disrespectful manner in regards to our local indigenous community. Where, I must be frank councillors, I just find it disrespectful where councillors at the last minute wheel out consultation or in Malaysia to our indigenous community at their convenience. I find that utterly disrespectful towards the indigenous community. And it is a politicisation by certain councillors to use that and weaponise that.
Councillor Greco, councillor Greco, as I've mentioned earlier, I know people are very passionate about...
Mayor Williams, I come from a Southern European background. This is how we speak. So I don't want to be told that I have to use a monotone voice. This is how I argue my case. If it offends people and it embarrasses people, I can't change my personality.
And your time is up now councillor Greco.
Not intended against any particular person.
Thank you councillor Greco, your time is up.
Councillor Williams.
Your time is up. Thank you councillor Greco. I will go over to the original... I will go over to the original alternative motion that councillor McCarthy has put up and councillor Rennie. Councillor Rennie, you want to speak on the item?
Yes, thank you, mayor. I'm delighted this has come back to council and I think it's going to move us a huge step in the right direction of actually resolving some of the issues that have been identified. Moving forward on the path, I think we'll assist everyone to use the land as we intended in terms of being able to move from the Beavers Road Bridge, or the Warkwark, sorry, bridge up to the Mayor Park area. Having a well-designed path, I think, is likely to result in fewer incursions onto the golf course and also fewer people, perhaps causing amenity impacts to the residents on the eastern side. And so I'm really pleased that the Capital Works team has already been looking at this. I think we'll come up with something really amazing and everyone in our community will be the better for it. So make no mistake, this is going to be something that improves amenity for the golf course users, the walking users, the residents, the local area, and I thank the staff for the work they've done so far. I think, you know, it's a great use of the 200,000 that the local member advocated for so strongly.
Thank you. Is there any...
Sorry, before you put the vote, I just think there's two words that need to be corrected, which I've just noticed, where it says, and it's my motion, so I'm just wondering if you can agree to this slight alteration to clarity, where it says in the final point, point seven...
I don't think it changes the motion in those wording?
Well, where it says "as adopted on 28 November 2022", it should actually say "as endorsed for consultation on 28 November 2022".
Okay, yep, there is a difference.
Just for clarity, that just checked, the seconder accepts that?
That's fine. If there are no further speakers, I'm going to put that item to vote. All those in favour of the alternative motion for councillor McCarthy? All those in favour? Councillor Hannan, councillor Rennie, councillor Newton and councillor McCarthy? All against? I've got... Nobody against? I'd say that, has that been abstained? Abstained by councillor Dimitriatus? Do abstain? Councillor Greco, you abstain? And I abstain also. Therefore, that has been carried, so thank you. We'll go over to item... We'll ask for councillor Lawrence to please come back into the chamber. Thank you. We're up to 9.7, the Merry Merry Way.
Mayor, I'd like to move that, but to delete point three, which has already been covered in the previous item. And in fact, I've got, sorry, mayor, I should say, I've got alternative words which have been submitted to officers, so they've got that ready.
Okay. Before we do so, we just, very shortly, we'll need to do a procedural motion to extend the meeting by another 30 minutes shortly.
Move that, mayor.
Okay, we'll move that. But I was just waiting for councillor Lawrence to be in the room, please, sorry. So if we extend the meeting for an extra 30 minutes from 9:01, if that's okay? My apologies. So we have a procedural motion to extend the meeting by 30 minutes from 9:01. Do I have a second for that? I saw councillor Rennie, sorry. All those in favour? That's carried unanimously. We're going to go over to item, as I said, 9.7, Merry Merry Way. Councillor McCarthy, you said you were alluding to a alternative motion, is that...
I'd circulated on words, there we go, I'll just confirm that they're correct.
Has that been circulated to other councillors earlier today?
Yes, it was circulated this afternoon, and this is the most updated version, and mayor, just point three can be deleted because it's been dealt with in the previous item.
Okay. Firstly, I'd like to ask councillors, do we have any questions to our officers?
Yes, I do, mayor.
Councillor Greco, thank you.
Through you, mayor, I'd like to ask our officers, the wording of this motion, to me appears to say that we agree to spend $25,000 and then it comes back to, it comes to a council budget deliberation, but I'm concerned with the word agreed because it's actually, I want to understand whether that formally commits us publicly to this project before it actually has a chance to be deliberated as part of our budget process.
Yeah, part of the budget. I'll hand that over to our officers.
Through you, mayor, that's councillor Greco's interpretation is correct, the mover's asking you to commit 25,000, the motion is asking you to commit $25,000 a year for the next three years tonight, with offset savings to be identified in the budget process.
Okay, I just want to therefore flag an amendment because I find the wording in this motion highly disingenuous.
Thank you councillor Greco. Are there any other questions in reference to this item? Okay, councillor McCarthy, because you're the mover to this alternative motion, do I have a second or two to this item? Councillor Rennie? Councillor McCarthy, if you'd like to start debating on this item, that'd be great.
Thank you, mayor. So as councillors would be aware, and as I've circulated as well, a brief video that supports what this initiative is, Merry Merry Way, and Merry Merry Way means, the Wayi is actually, is the Wurundjeri word for us and together, effectively arose from what were horrific incidents both adjacent to and in the vicinity of Mary Creek in 2019. I won't go into the nature of those incidents, other than to say that those incidents were not what we consider is what the nature of the Mary Creek corridor should be about, and absolutely, and this was evidenced by the subsequent report issued by our neighbouring council, council, Marybeck Council, created a sense of unsafe environments, a lack of trust and a sense of fear in relation to what should be a sacred space for our community, and of course, a corridor which we know through councils' work and also through community work is significantly important, not just to existing residents but also to traditional owners. So the project of Merry Merry Way was to do the social and cultural piece around rebuilding trust and connection with the Mary corridor, to involve traditional owners in that process, in particular Auntie Gail Smith, who has recorded a significant explanation that councillors and the community can listen to online, and really builds a pathway to really rebuild that trust and connection, but also supports the aspirations of the Wurundjeri elders in this particular regard, to build cultural knowledge and cultural connection, to rebuild trust with the community, to build community support to Mary Creek and the corridor, as effectively not just a waterway, which we now embrace, but in fact, as a vibrant, living and thriving and peaceful place for our whole community, for our natural ecosystems, and something which we should be treasured for the future. This is a piece of work which didn't start in Darabban Council, it started in our neighbouring council of Marybeck. They have supported it in partnership with Wurundjeri Council and with Seres, and with a whole range of community members, both on the Darabban and Marybeck sides, including, and some of the community members have participated in the process, include our lifetime achievement award winner Carolyn Lunt, who was here this evening, so it was great to see her continuing connection to Mary Creek recognised, but also people like that being involved in the consultation. And really what this is, is about continuing to build that cultural connection, to build that sense of safety, to work collaboratively with our neighbouring council, and to create opportunities for our community to regain that sense of trust, regain that sense of connection, but significantly build, make stronger community involvement in the future of Mary Creek, and to support the work of all the other organisations that do the biodiversity and rehabilitation work that we know is also so critical.
Thank you, perfect timing. Councillor Rennie, as a seconder, would you like to speak on the item?
Happy to reserve, thank you, mayor.
No problem. Councillor Newton?
Thank you, mayor Williams, I'm just rising to support this alternate motion, so I've jogged and walked along the Mary Creek a number of times, and probably hundreds of times, and, you know, I do remember the community sentiment and the walk along Mary Creek that happened after this awful, awful incident, and the way the community came together to say that we belong here, we belong to walk safely, to jog safely, to recreate and be in these public spaces safely. I think there is, this is one of the most important things that we can do to ensure that women and everyone in our community feels safe in our public spaces, and I fully support this proposal.
Thank you. Because we're really running out of time, I'm going to ask any...
I have an amendment, I flagged an amendment.
Councillor Greco?
My amendment will be really quick and sharp, just to remove the word "support", is that right at the beginning of the, no, remove the word "agrees" and to substitute that word with "consider", for that council consider joining.
Does the mover and seconder accept councillor Greco's amendment?
No.
Councillor Greco, do you have a second of your... Councillor Dimitriatus, councillor Greco?
Yeah, look, very quickly, I understand this project, I've read through the report, I understand the sentiments there. Our officers have actually recommended that right at the outset, that we do not commit to becoming a partner and contributing $25,000, and it's been well argued in the report why we shouldn't be doing that, but I'm willing to compromise on this, and that's why I've said that we should consider this as part of our next budget deliberations, rather than making, spending money on the run as we are doing now, and that let it come back to our budget deliberations. We've got a process where we're trying to prioritise things, let it come to that, and then as part of that process, we can then make a decision on whether we agree to put an extra $25,000 towards this, and also gives us an opportunity to discuss with our officers what, more about what they've written in this report regarding, particularly regarding how our officers feel that we're already making a valuable contribution in Malaysia to this project, because it is an important project, undeniably so, but we have processes, and rather than spending money on the run, just like that, we shouldn't be doing that. And the final point that I'd make, which I highlighted when I flagged this motion, I find that putting forward of this motion quite disingenuous, notwithstanding the discussions that we had earlier today as a group of councillors, where we said that let's bring this forward to a council budget deliberation process. Instead, what we've got delivered up in a, in a playing with language, is to try to get the council to commit straight up to the $25,000, rather...
Greco, for your amendment, can I suggest you also then delete the words "to identify a suitable funding source for this investment"? So it's just going into the budget deliberations. Thank you. Yeah, you happy for governance to make that change for you, just to get clarity? So I'm suggesting for clarity for the administration, you also delete the words "to identify a suitable funding source for this investment", so it just becomes, it's considered as a priority as part of your deliberations, and there's no assumption that we're going to fund it.
Do I have to get the mover and seconder to okay those words?
Just checking for clarity. You happy with that councillor Greco or not? Is that what you'd like?
I'm happy with that.
And then you need to get the seconder to check.
English is my second language, I'm happy with that.
Does the mover and seconder, once the wording comes up, if they're happy with that, changes?
Happy with the words the C E Os.
You're not the mover, I'm sorry councillor Lawrence, I'm asking the councillor, the mover, and I'm asking the...
Sorry, I was the seconder.
Yes, thank you.
I'm happy with that change, but do we need to also remove the final sentence to make sure it's not a commitment?
That's up to you. I just, the other bits, I think it was important to remove them for clarity.
Yeah, sure.
Sorry, three mayor.
So I think we're just supposedly going to the budget process, but instead what we've got is wording that we're committing to this on the night, on the run, without much information about it, and I think it's a great project, you know, it's something that we can look forward to, but in our, considering our financial situation, we need to look at this in the context of the whole budget process, rather than just agreeing on the night on something that, you know, we don't know how it's going to impact us in the future. So thank you to councillor Greco for putting this amendment up, that is a lot fairer and in line with what we discussed previously.
Thank you councillor Dimitriatus. If there are any further speakers on the amendment that's been brought forward by councillor Greco and seconded by councillor Lawrence, thank you.
Yes, through you, mayor Williams, I'm happy to support this amendment. It takes it back, I think, from the original officer recommendation was sort of a blunt no. We then had a bit of a queue jumping wording come in here to jump the budget process, to totally ignore the budget process. This is really a worthy project, but it should be considered in the budget process, just like other places are, and I'm certainly not going to go through the horrific things that have happened on Plenty Road and Darabban Creek and Bandura Park, and the lack of funding that's been going on there for decades, but we do have to make our waterways safe, and so it's a very worthy project, but that doesn't mean it leapfrogs other areas.
Thank you councillor Lawrence. I will put that item to vote. All those in favour of the amendment that councillor Greco has put forward and councillor Dimitriatus has put forward as a seconder? All those in favour? I've got councillor Dimitriatus, councillor Lawrence, councillor Greco and myself, that's four, and all those against the amendment? I've got councillor Hannan, councillor Rennie, councillor Newton and councillor McCarthy, that is a draw. I will have to use my casting vote, which I don't like to do, but I feel in this situation, I feel that I'm going to have to use my casting vote, and I am happy to accept this amendment on the chances that, I don't want to undermine this worthy project, but I do feel that it's, we have so many projects and we're in a situation that we haven't gone through the budget consideration at this point in time, and I feel that it needs to be part of that process also. So in that case, that item has been now carried as the, as the new motion, the substantive motion.
Mayor, I'd like to move a procedural that we put the motion to the vote.
We'd like to put the motion to vote, not a problem. All those in favour with the motion that's in...
Second the procedural.
I'm happy, sorry. Councillor Rennie, thank you. Councillor Rennie to second the procedural. All those in favour of the motion that's in front of us? I've got councillor, that's carried unanimously, thank you.
That's a procedural.
That was a procedural.
Now we're going to vote on the item that's in front of us. Councillors, do we have a, I'd like to move the item, do we have, sorry, we're going to vote on the item? All those in favour? Councillor, that's been voted unanimously, thank you. I'm going to go straight over to the governance report. Now, because we are really strict with time, I'm only going to ask the mover to now speak. Unless you're voting or speaking against, I will allow you to speak against, otherwise I'm going to now put every item straightforward to a vote after the mover. So do we have a mover in reference to the governance report? Councillor Rennie and councillor McCarthy as a seconder? Would you like to speak on the item?
Yes, thank you, mayor. This is a particularly important report from a point of view of transparency for the community, and one of the reasons I say that is that at point six in this report, it notes the cost to council for the appointment of the municipal monitor, Mr John Watson. Mr Watson was with us for nine months, and that cost council just over $100,000. It's a lot of money. I'd have to say I felt that Mr Watson made a very valuable contribution to the council, and I'm looking forward to his report, which I hope will be forthcoming quite soon. It's a shame we had to spend that money. Obviously, it wasn't a choice that we had, it was imposed on us by the state government as a result of a number of behaviours that were identified as being of concern, and, you know, I hope that it stands as a learning opportunity for people on council, that that's stands as a learning opportunity for people on council, that that's $100,000 that hasn't gone to other things that might have benefited our community more than having a monitor here, notwithstanding the excellent contribution I do believe Mr Watson made. There's a couple of other things that are worth noting, and I'd particularly like to note that in the report tonight, we are making the appointment of some people to the Darabin Arts Heritage Advisory Panel, I thank all of the staff who've been involved in that assessment process, and particularly thank every community member who put up their hand, hoping to be a member of that advisory panel, we are so fortunate to have a community that is so skilled and interested and values the arts in our municipality, and I'm delighted that I think there's 10 people who will be appointed moving forward, I know that Councilor Newton has for a long time chaired that meeting, and other councillors have also been involved over the years. The other point of interest is that there are a number of motions covered in this governance report tonight, that our council will be putting forward to the MAV and to ALGA, and they each represent an important area of advocacy for our council, noting that there is advocacy in relation to asylum seekers and temporary visas, that there's also advocacy in relation to the climate emergency. And I once again commend it to everyone, I think it's, if people in our community want to understand a bit more about how council runs, this is the report they should be reading, thanks.
Thank you. Do we have any councillors that would like to speak against the motion? If not, then I'm having the item to be put to vote, all those in favour, that is carried unanimously, thank you. We'll go on to item nine point eleven, which is council gift policy, do I have a mover on this item? Thank you, Councilor Hannan, do I have a second, Councilor Greco? As I said, I'm only allowing the mover to speak unless there's a person who's speaking against, Councilor Hannan.
Thank you, Mayor, this updated policy presents Darabin council's commitment to the highest levels of integrity and transparency, it sends clear messages that councillors will not take gifts in order to bias their decision-making and will assess decisions on their merits, I'd like to thank the staff who worked on updating this policy and presenting it for decision tonight, and making it available to our community. Briefly, there are a few key points to note in relation to this policy, it's revised wording in line to keep it within the requirements of the Local Government Act, the value, the value of gifts which is seen as token has changed from $5 to $20, unless there are repeated gifts of this value within a 12-month period, which is a common sense amendment with inflation and the times to avoid unnecessary administrative burdens. There's transparency, just to be very clear, in the dollar value of gifts provided to the mayor and the deputy mayor and councillors ending their term, it is not the value set of an expensive gold watch, in previous years, practice has been set at about the cost of a nice bunch of indigenous flowers, which I believe is appropriate for such events, I'll leave it at that, thank you.
Thank you. If there are no councillors that would like to speak against the item, I'd like to put the item to vote, all those in favour, that's carried unanimously, thank you. We'll go over to item, community complaints about the councillor policy, which is nine point twelve. Councillors, do I have a mover in reference to this item? Councilor Greco, do I have a second? Councilor McCarthy, thank you, Councilor Greco, if you'd like to speak to the item.
Look, I'll be very brief, it's about time that we had a clear policy about complaints towards councillors, and we have other policies in relation to if people want a lodge complaints or reviews in regards to what council does, but we don't have one directly related to councillors, I think it's important that we do, and the policy's pretty detailed, goes through, and that we all need to be subject to possible future complaints in relation to if residents are not happy with our performance or our conduct, and that they've got the legitimate right, and they should have a process that needs to be gone through in order to get a proper hearing in relation to a complaint that's directed towards councillors. Obviously, we have to protect against, because we're dealing with a highly political environment and context, obviously we have to try and protect against vexatious type complaints, and then I think that the policy tries to cover sufficiently around that space, but as councillors, we should not be afraid of complaints coming to us, if we get elected in these positions to represent the community, that comes part and parcel with the job, if you like, with the representation, so I'm glad we've got this, and we should vote for it, and put it in place, and allow it to take its course, I even noticed tonight, where I think there was somebody that mentioned issues in relation, that we didn't allow the question, now we've got a process that they could hopefully explore their complaint through that process, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Greco. Is there any councillors that would like to speak against the item? If not, then I would like to put the item to vote, all those in favour, that is carried unanimously, thank you, councillors. I'll move along to the next item, which is nine point thirteen, towards zero homelessness in Darabin. Councillors, Councilor Lawrence as the mover, do we have a second, Councilor Greco? Council Lawrence, over to you.
Thank you, Mayor Williams, yes, this is a report coming back from previous council reports on this issue, that, and this report refers this programme for consideration in a budget process. The problem of homelessness in Darabin is reaching quite acute stage, you know, just the amount of homelessness is evident even around the council chamber, there's three regular sleeping spots around the chamber, that was never the case 10 years ago, so the kind of housing poverty that I witnessed in my earlier life in Fitzroy has come, and the Hourglass Society has come to Darabin, so it's a very serious subject, I was heartened by the CEO's investigation of this, obviously CEO comes to us with a reputation in Port Adelaide, in the city of Adelaide, and also the city of Port Phillip, on these types of responses, and the, you know, rough sleeping is an acute form of homelessness, we've got other forms of homelessness that we know, couch surfing, sleeping in cars, and sleeping in caravans, we've got people who are permanently in caravans in our streets, we don't dislodge them, but I was heartened to know that the outreach programmes that have been put in the last few years, we're actually approaching this type of outreach, because it requires the council to have partners who outreach, connect with the homeless, and set them up on a pathway to get actual temporary emergency and ultimately permanent housing, so breaking that cycle is important, it's not about hiding the homeless, it's about empowering them to get permanent and secure housing so that they can make other steps in their lives, we also know 50% of the homeless rough sleeping are suffering from mental health issues, and those treatments, whether they be psychological or medical, can only be sustained if they get safe housing, this has been determined in numerous studies in the US and the UK, so at this point, we're kind of 60% or 70% towards doing what this programme sets out to do, it will be referred and considered amongst other things inside the budget, it does require for us to get to that programme and to qualify to increase our funding considerably, but again, as is proper, this is going to go into the budget process and be considered then.
Thank you. Councillors, do we have any other councillors that would like to speak against the item? If not, then I'd like to put the item to vote, okay, all those, all those in favour of the item, that's been carried unanimously, thank you. I'll move on to the next item, nine point fourteen, promoting women and girls in sport partnership agreement, the year four outcomes report, do I have a mover on this item? Council Rennie, Council McCarthy is second, Council Rennie, thank you.
This is one of those reports that's an absolute delight to read when it comes to council, it identifies some of the work that's been undertaken by the Darabin Women's Sporting Club, the Darabin Falcons, and I think makes a really clear case for the link between our investment and the success story of women and girls' participation in Darabin, I don't believe there's any way we could as a council have got a higher return on our dollar in terms of seeing women and girls participate in sport in these numbers, and when one club does it well, they shine a light for other clubs to follow, it's the, it's the leadership piece, it's the type of leadership piece that we saw with our EGM policy, which we know is the country's strongest and other councils look to, this is the club that shows the leadership and demonstrates to other clubs what they should be looking up for, and we see that in some of the description of the club and the achievements, the prizes that people in that club have won, the fact that we've got AFLW captains of teams that started their careers with the Darabin Falcons, but this didn't just happen, this work at the Darabin Falcons is a result of an enormous volunteer effort, and I think that that needs to be recognised, that there are people in our community who devote hours and hours, weeks of their time to achieving these outcomes, who are so committed to making sure that every girl in our municipality has an opportunity to participate in this grassroots way, this is not in any way to underestimate the work that also happens in other clubs, but I know that other clubs look to the Falcons and say they're doing it, what do we need to do, how do we need to change our practice to get that kind of level of participation? I'd also like to thank the staff within Darabin council who have, I think, really supported this partnership over a number of years, and built a really close relationship, and the relationships between our staff in leisure and rec and all of our sporting clubs are pretty fundamental to making sure that grassroots community sport in our municipality goes from strength to strength.
Thank you. If there are no councillors that would like to speak against this item, I would like to put this item, would like to speak against, sure, Councilor Greco.
Look, I just want to express some concerns in relation to the report, I acknowledge all the good work that the Darabin Falcons do, but as a constructive criticism, I like to offer this up, is that I've read thoroughly through the report, unfortunately, I think a lot more could be done, if we are to give all young women and girls in our city an opportunity to participate in sport, I think more really needs to be done in relation to our multicultural community, or young girls that do come from a multicultural background, I just have to continuously remind councillors that nearly 70% of our community in the city of Darabin is from a multicultural background, in the report that I read, I did not see, you know, real rigor in terms of outcomes in relation to involving young girls from a multicultural background, I would ask the Darabin Falcons if they could make an extra effort in relation to involving people from that cohort, because they are not just the minority in our community, they could also represent a large part of our community, so we need to, we need to ensure that they are involved, the council invested heavily with the Darabin Falcons in Malaysia to this project, and we have to ensure that the outcomes are delivered in regards to all people in our community, so I make that appeal, I'm hoping that in future, extra focus can be given to that cohort, a large cohort in our community, so that we can ensure that all young girls, irrespective of their cultural, religious background, or ethnic background, actually get the same amount of opportunity to participate in sport as others in our community do, thank you.
Thank you. If there are no further speakers, I'd like to put that item to vote, all those in favour, that has been carried unanimously, I'd like to ask for a procedural motion to extend for an extra 30 minutes to the meeting, Councilor Greco and Councilor Rennie, all those in favour, that's been carried unanimously, thank you. I'll move over to our next item, which is the CEO employment matters, nine point fifteen, I believe our CEO does have a conflict.
Thank you, Mayor, just to clarify, a conflict of interest in relation to this, I've been consulted on the policies, but I shouldn't be in the room when you vote on it, thank you.
No problem, thank you, Peter. I'll just wait for Peter to vacate the chamber. Councillors, I have a report in front of us, do I have a mover in reference to this item, Councilor Greco, do I have a second? Council Lawrence, Council, Council Greco as the mover, would you like to debate on the item?
Yeah, look, I'll just say very briefly, we've got here the charter, CEO Employment Matters Committee Charter that we're considering, also we're considering the remuneration policy, and the, and also the recruitment of the independent chair of the, of the CEO Employment Matters Committee, look, we've had meetings with the CEO Employment Matters Committee, where we've discussed the charter, we've also discussed the remuneration policy, and we've gone through fairly thoroughly with the assistance of the independent chair, Mr Joe Carboni, so what's recommended here is that we adopt the charter, and also that we adopt the remuneration policy, as there you can see is attachment C and attachment D, and some changes have been made to the charter, and also some changes have been made to the remuneration policy, I should say the remuneration policy has been separated from the charter, so they're two distinct documents, but they, so that rather than having everything put down in the charter, they've been separated, so it actually makes the work clearer, and the changes that have been made to the charter are changes in relation to the role of the independent chair, particularly about the removing voting rights of the independent chair, and so that ensures that the councillors still, the council still maintain proper, if you like, jurisdiction over matters concerning the CEO, given that we're tasked through legislation to actually provide that direction in relation to CEO employment matters, of course we need the support and the guidance of the chair, but it doesn't necessarily follow that the chair should have a vote in matters that really essentially concern the council, and just very quickly, also in relation to the charter, that it's providing a two plus two years of appointment for a CEO chair, changing what the officer recommendation, which was three plus three, I think two plus two is better, it's over a four-year term, because then it enables a council, given that we elected her for four years, in relation to the remuneration policy, the committee decided that as part of the remuneration policy, the council in determining any future pay rises, also-
Two seconds left.
You know, the EBA of the council, of course, the EBA applies to staff, but it's something that should be taken into account when we-
Your time is up, thank you. Council Lawrence, I believe you're the second, and if we don't have any councillors voting, sorry, speaking against, you're speaking against, no problem, Council Hannan.
I'll reserve my right.
Thank you, Mayor, I'm broadly in favour of the updated documents, with one exception in the, in the charter for the committee, I don't agree with the proposed change to withdraw the voting rights of the chair, I believe there are very good reasons why the chair of this committee should have voting rights, I'd like to remind councillors and anyone watching that this is a subcommittee, it's an advisory committee of council, it has no powers to make any decisions on behalf of council, it makes recommendations to the nine councillors, and the nine councillors, this council, makes decisions in relation to CEO employment, therefore, we are not delegating any powers away from council by empowering the chair to have a vote, there are very good reasons why the chair should have a vote, it is good practice in the sector, it is standard, it is practice in other important committees in Darabin, particularly the Audit and Risk Committee, where there are serious and significant risks involved, very, you know, pivotal decisions to be made, and having- And having a firstly recruiting a specialised, qualified person and holding them at a high level of accountability and seeking their assistance in guiding us through, guiding that committee through difficult decision-making. I know in the past that having a chair with, with the ability to vote has, has helped us through difficult times. Again, I emphasise, it's non-binding. It, it only serves to make a recommendation.
Ten seconds left.
And if members of that committee disagree with that recommendation, they can represent that to their colleagues when it comes back to council. I, I feel quite strongly that we should retain the voting power of that chair, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hannan. Are there any other councillors? Councillor Lawrence and then I'll go to councillor.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Williams. Yeah, look, I'm happy to support this recommendation here. It's a very important committee, as has been noted by councillor Hannan. It's not a decision-making, it makes a recommendation and it works with an independent person for guidance. So I'm happy with this draft, I'm not sure, and I, I'm voting for a committee that I've come off, deliberately come off to resolve tensions and that people see that this might be a sort of power play here on this, this committee. I don't think it's like that at all. And I think actually, these decisions still come back to council. And I also think people are mistaken if they think that expressing power on this committee gives them ownership of the CEO. The CEO's working at a very high level, with a very big reputation and is guided by evidence and guided by quite extensive experience in guiding cities much larger than this. So again, I think sometimes we get too caught up in power and the idea of mentorship and the idea of learning from others and learning from independent people and learning from the CEO might be something we also want to think about.
Thank you, councillor Newton.
Thank you, Mayor Williams. I am strongly against removing voting rights from the independent chair. So best practice in the sector is that the independent chair would have voting rights. Best practice in the sector would be a three-year term followed by the ability to do another three-year term. That would match our Audit and Risk Committee. And I see absolutely no good reason to remove voting rights when we are asking the independent chair to help guide us through the process. So I think this is a very, very, very disappointing recommendation, I cannot support it.
Thank you. If there are, councillor Rennie.
Similarly, I rise to express concern about the removal of voting rights of the independent chair. As a councillor who is not on the CEO Employment Matters Committee, I would have a lot more confidence in the recommendations that that committee makes to all of council if I knew that the independent chair had those voting rights and was actually able to exercise them, where consensus might not be reached. The independent chair is appointed because of their expertise. Let's be clear, councillors do not have that level of expertise, that's why we get an independent chair, that's best practice. It's in the Local Government Act that we actually have to get that type of HR expertise. Why would we get it if we're not willing to listen to it? And the, the mechanism for ensuring that we listen to it is giving that person a vote. So as I said, I would feel much more confident as a councillor who stepped down. I decided that I'd been on the CEO Employment Matters Committee for long enough and no longer wish to be on it. But I do want to have confidence in the recommendations that it makes to me because it's all of us in this chamber who make the decisions. And without those voting rights being there, I'm not as convinced that I will be confident in the recommendations that come from that committee when it comes to having to vote on them in this chamber.
Thank you, councillor Rennie. Do we have any other councillors? Councillor Dimitriades.
Thank you, Mayor. Just quickly, I, on the issue of voting rights for the chair, I am supporting this recommendation that we remove voting rights from the chair and that's for a number of reasons. We've had a lot of problems in the past regarding this issue. And what we, one of the main arguments is that the independent chair doesn't actually work on a daily basis with the CEO. They don't understand, like, there's a lot of things that we review, KPIs, that require councillor input. So having, so removing that particular voting ability, particularly when they're not elected, when they're not elected and do not represent the community, I believe they should not be having a vote. So therefore, I'm in complete support of this recommendation and I think it's a great way forward to ensure that there's accountability for, from the committee.
Thank you. I believe there's only one other councillor that has not spoken, I will give him the opportunity to speak, councillor McCarthy.
Mayor, it's, it's very, very kind of you to, to call on me to speak, I wasn't going to, but I actually have to disagree with the comments that councillor Dimitriades made. And I think it's worth clarifying why, why the function of having an independent chair and them having a vote as part of the process is actually a simple, practical and quite reasonable element. And I would just draw councillors' attention back to the fact that in our audit committee, we have independent people who are empowered to be part of that decision-making process. They have to have a level of ownership and engagement in that process. We don't deny them the vote in that process just because they weren't elected by the community. We empower them with a vote because of their expertise and because they are a stakeholder in that process and that decision-making. And I think if we think about the independent members of our audit committee and we think about the independent chair of our CEO Employment Matters Committee, the function is incredibly similar and it's a respectful element. I can see which way the vote's going to go, Mayor, but I would ask councillors to just reflect upon the way in which we think about the role, we think about the way in which we empower that role and the importance of that role. And a simple thing is actually to retain that vote for the chair. In saying that, I'll finish my comments, Mayor, and, and thank you for the debate.
Thank you very much. As there are no further speakers.
I have a right reply, just very briefly.
You certainly do.
Look, I, I'll just make the point, just picking up on what some, some of the councillors have said. I, I think it's the very point that the committee does not have any power. Because the committee does not have any power in making the ultimate decision, that's council that makes the ultimate decision, it, it's just redundant, therefore, to give voting rights to the chair in relation to the CEO Employment Matters Committee. I think the focus of the chair is, and, and it's been good working with this current chair, is that where they provide us advice, you know, guidance and expertise, that should be the focus of the chair. Not so much the, the actual responsibility of having voting rights and at times actually having a casting vote. Because ultimately, the decision is made by the council, as councillors have said. And let's get the, let's focus the chair on providing us that advice, taking us through a process. And then if need be, the CEO Employment Matters Committee making a, a recommendation and then that recommendation to council, because council ultimately makes the decision. So I'm just saying that it's completely redundant for the, for the chair to have this status of having voting rights. It's not necessary because the legislation does not require that. The legislation focuses on that the, that the chair or, or not even the chair, that, that we need to get advice and guidance by somebody who has expertise. The legislation does not require us to have somebody on the CEO Employment Matters Committee as an in-person person with, with voting rights. So I, I fully support the, the recommendations that have come to us. And let's just vote this through, guys, and let's just move on. Thank you.
No further speakers, I will now put that item to vote. All those in favour, that's councillor Dimitriades, councillor Lawrence, councillor Greco and myself, councillor Williams, all those against, councillor Rennie, councillor Newton and those abstaining, which be councillor Hannan and councillor McCarthy, so that's considered a draw. I will use my casting vote and the reason being is that, yes, it might be best practice in the sector, but I believe that the chairperson that we currently have does give a very high level of expertise. And I feel that if he is given the voting rights at the moment, that would allow, I guess, an even amount on that, on that recommendation. And I believe that could implicate and cause some sort of concerns, as it may split a vote. I also share the same practices, what councillor Greco was saying is that I believe a chairperson in this particular role should be giving their expertise and not voting on their expertise at the same time. It is best practice, but it's not compulsory for a chairperson to, to have that, to have those voting rights. So therefore, I will be using my casting vote to, to allow this amendment to go through. So that, that item is now being carried, so thank you. Can we ask the CEO to please come in? We have item number 10 this evening. As there are no items to be tabled this evening, I will go over to our notice of motions. Councillors, there are no notice of motions to be, to be considered this evening, so I'll go straight into urgent business items.
Mayor Williams, I have an urgent motion that I'd like council to consider to be included as part of the agenda tonight.
Okay, no problem. Now, has that been provided to us?
Yes, it's been circulated.
Yes, okay. Can we have that item up?
So I would like to move a motion that my urgent motion be considered as part of council business tonight.
As part of council business, so therefore I believe we have to vote on that, is that correct?
Sorry, yes, we don't have councillor Greco's urgent motion prepared for screen.
Councillor Greco, we don't have your urgent motion, can you kindly ensure or tell us when that was sent through or who you sent that through to?
We do have it. I'll send it through to governance, but I think it's through you, Mayor, I think it's a procedural motion.
It's a procedural motion.
At the moment.
Consider the, yeah, thank you for the correction, it's a procedural motion. Consider my urgent motion, which has been previously circulated to councillors. It's a procedural motion.
Mayor, could I ask for governance advice as to whether it meets the criteria?
Over to our governance.
Through you, Chair, we had provided advice through the CEO that we don't believe that it constitutes urgent business and that it can safely be put to the April council meeting or it can be done through a service request and done by officers.
Is it possible to ask councillor Greco why he considers this to be an urgent item? I don't know, that's, um... I, I'd like to ask councillor Greco why you personally think it's, it would be considered an urgent item. I, I, I just want that as a real quick summary, it's not a debate.
Really quickly, it should be considered as an urgent motion because a decision is imminent by the minister in relation to Preston Market. It's urgent because it's something that cannot wait to the, to the next council meeting. And it's also urgent because it provides a direction and a way forward for the, for the mayor to actually lodge the petition directly with, with the, with the minister for planning.
Thank you. We do have a procedural motion on that item, whether we're going to accept it or not for an urgent business item. Do I have a second for that procedural motion? Councillors, do we have a second procedural? Councillor Lawrence. Are we going to have to just go straight to the vote on that item? For that to be considered as an urgent item to be added to our business this evening, I'll put that item to vote. All those in favour? Councillor Greco and councillor Williams and councillor Dimitriades and councillor Lawrence. All those against, councillor Hannan, councillor Rennie, councillor Newton and councillor McCarthy, that is a draw. I'll use my casting vote and I will accept it, considering the circumstances that it impacts quite a number of people in our community.
Mayor, I will move now that, that my urgent motion now be put as a, as a motion before the council.
Um, through you, Mayor, I've just given it to governance, it's on the screen, it's a bit small. But I think that's it, councillor Greco, if I've got it right from your last email to me.
Yep, it, it's my motion, the only, instead of having, yeah, there we go, we've got the, instead of dot points, it's got numbers, it's okay.
That is your motion there. Okay, councillor Greco.
I'll move it, yep.
To move it, do we have a second on that item? Councillors, do we have a second for that item to be supported this evening? Councillor Rennie, councillor Greco, you can speak to the item.
Just very quickly, I think the, the urgent motion is quite self-explanatory. Councillors, the mayor went out of her way last Thursday to try and submit the motion to our MPs and to the minister. Unfortunately, no one was present to receive the mayor on the steps of Parliament, which is quite disappointing, given that over 15,400 community residents signed the petition to actually save the market and ensure that the market is not, not demolished. Also, what I think we need to, why this is an important motion that we pass is that it's quite imminent that the, that the minister will be making a decision about the future of the market, given the amount of media interest in recent times and that, and the decision is, is, is pending within, I believe, within the next few weeks. So given that, it's, it's critical that, that the petition of the council with over 15,400 signatures is actually submitted to the, to the planning minister before the planning minister makes a decision. We understand that our particular petition, because it was worded, cannot be tabled in Parliament. But it's important that it hits the minister's desk as quickly as possible so the minister can take into account the, the views of 15,400 people in our city before she makes a decision on, on the market. So that's why it's quite critical that we, that we do that. Also, what the motion does is that it also, the motion ensures that we write to the upper house members of Parliament for the northern metro region and also to the lower house local parliamentarians, advising them of council's request to have the, to ensure that the, that the petition is provided to the, to the planning minister and also that they lend their support and make, and lobby the minister to ensure that the minister takes into account the petition and ensures that the Preston Market is protected. They are, after all, our, our local MPs and they should have a, a clear, a clear interest in ensuring that this market remains where it is. Look, councillors, council has invested very heavily, both financially and in terms of lobbying and resources. Not, not to speak about the amount of investment that has come from the part of our community in ensuring that this market, this icon, remains where it is. Let's put this petition before the minister ASAP so that the minister can hear loud and clear what the community's desires and wants are in regards to preserving and maintaining our market and ensuring that it's not demolished.
Thank you, councillor Greco. Councillor Rennie is the second.
No, councillor Greco's covered it, I think it goes straight to the vote.
Okay, happy to put that item to vote. Councillor Hannan, as an against, happy to speak if you like.
Thank you, Mayor. Look, regrettably, I rise to speak against this motion. Not at all because I don't support the principle of this motion. There can be no doubt from anyone in the community about councillors' commitment to saving the Preston Market. It is our number one advocacy item, we, as councillor Greco has said, have spent considerable resources. We've painted buses, we've had councils, including myself, as part of media releases and, and social media programmes. We've had formal presentations of the steps of Parliament. We don't need an urgent business item. We don't need an urgent business item to tell us what we were going to do anyway. If this item was not presented, or if this item failed, I don't think there's anyone in this room doubts that we will be writing to the minister and presenting the petition. In fact, we had a discussion earlier today, we were talking about having an honest discussion with each other. We know that this, this item is not necessary, it's certainly not urgent, and if it, if this item failed, the actions requested would still be taken, it would be, the present, the petition would be presented to the minister, and we would write to the northern metro, upper house, and other members. The reason I make a stand here is because I think these, these motions are becoming very frequent and overly prescriptive in step-by-step, seeking to guide exactly what is done at every step of the motion, step of the process, instead of giving a strategy to our leadership, and giving, and trusting them to go ahead and deliver that strategy. We don't need something to, an item to tell us what we're going to do anyway, this is not urgent, it should not have been allowed onto the agenda tonight.
Thank you councillor Hannon, if there are no further speakers, councillor Lawrence.
Just briefly, Mayor Williams, I'm happy to support this motion, it strikes out some very important factors about the large size of these two petitions. I'm also aware the mayor has been flat-out fighting this fight, and is doing much more than what's in this motion, but I think it is important that we listen to our fellow councillors in the chamber about how they feel, and we also then make public, you know, some basic facts of what the mayor-
Councillor Lawrence, because we've only got two minutes left for this meeting to finish completely, I have to ask that item to be put to vote. All those in favour? All those against? Sorry, all those in favour, which was councillor Rennie, councillor Newton, councillor McCarthy, councillor Lawrence, councillor Greco, councillor Williams, all those against? All those abstaining? Councillor Dimitriadis and councillor Hannon, thank you. I'd like to move over to the next item.
Through you, mayor, just for clarity, under 8.13G of our governance rules, and for transparency of us, that an urgent item of business be held tonight confidentially in relation to Alphington Street. To Wingrove Street, Alphington, I always get that wrong, sorry, mayor, and it's a confidential item, I'll explain that in confidential-
Mayor, if, before we deal with that matter, including any admission onto the agenda, I need to declare a conflict of interest as foreshadowed-
Sure, thank you.
Can I just confirm that I should do that now?
Yes, please.
And I'll return for the other confidential item.
Through you, mayor, I don't think you need to, absent now, we can do, when we go into confidence, work out which one we deal with first, in terms of urgency.
So I should absent myself now?
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, item 12, for urgent business, there is one confidential item that we have left, which is the Melbourne Innovation Centre to be considered in the confidential section of the agenda. It is deemed confidential pursuant to the section three, one of the Local Government Act specifically, cancel business information being information, and that would be prejudice that council's position in commercial negotiations if prematurely released. I am seeking that this matter is considered prior to the CEO performance, well, agreement, sorry, we've done all that, and to be clearly conflict in relation to this matter. So councillors, are there any questions to the officers regarding this item?
Mayor, I need to declare a conflict, which I've already declared, I'm going to declare it again and remove myself from the room-
Okay, thank you.
-because I should not deal with the procedural element in relation to this matter. I have a conflict of interest, it's a material conflict by virtue of a working relationship with potential individuals and organisations that would benefit from council's decision, and so I'll remove myself from the meeting.
That'd be great, thank you councillor McCarthy.
Through, through you, mayor. In accordance with the governance rule, if you reasonably believe that the remaining business will take less than 15 minutes to transact, you can seek agreement of the councils not to adjourn the meeting to a subsequent day.
Oh, do I need an agreement?
By the councillors.
Oh, so councillors, for us to finish tonight's agendas, or, sorry, meeting, we need an extra 15 minutes, and we believe that if it can be finished within the next 15 minutes, I just need an agreement from all councillors that we can do that. So I guess, do we have a show of hands regarding that? All those in favour? That's been carried unanimously, thank you. So has this been the last item? I know and believe that we can finish this evening. I believe this item needs to go into camera, so therefore, I will ask, yes? Okay, I need a procedural motion for it to be-
Move that we go into camera?
No, no, I need a procedural motion prior to that, for this item to go into the agenda, so can I have a procedural motion and a move and a second for that?
Sorry, which, which, ma, MIC?
Yeah.
That can be admitted without procedural motion, so I think you just need to move into confidence, I think you are the ones on the agenda as well, I think you just need a motion to move into confidence.
Okay, my apologies.
Move that we move into camera.
Councillor Lawrence is moving that into camera, do I have a second, please, for that item? Councillor Greco, all those in favour? That's been carried unanimously, thank you. This item will go into the camera, and I guess the live streaming will be closed down, and then we'll reopen when we finish that agenda item, thank you. And can we-